Yes.
As we remind, because we're on Twitter, we have to remember to use our microphone. We didn't last week and everybody could not hear us. So remember when you're talking, please scoot into the mic. Okay, I'm going to call to order this special board of education meeting. Today is October 3rd, 2016. And moving to the second item, as everyone had a chance to read the minutes that Ms. Robbins graciously gave to us. Do you need a few moments? I can give them to you. Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Thank you to Ms. Jennifer, that goes six minutes for the reading and all. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brandon. All of them say alright. You host. Motion carried. Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Robbins. Moving on to number three, test scores. Ms. Kim.
You have a packet that was shared with you on Google, I believe. And there are several documents in that packet. The first page is our accountability profile, which has basically a summary of information for all of our schools and districts this year regarding our letter scores and overall scores, as well as classifications. And you also have the chart there to reference the classifications from previous years. The CAT scores did not change for that. On the subsequent pages, the last time I was here, but we did all those lovely changes, how everything was recalculated in elementary, middle, and high school. And so because you all were familiar with those charts, I put each of the school's data in that format for you. If there is a blank, for example, the very first one on A.D. Chandler, you see that there are some blank boxes there on novice reduction, and that is because they did not have any novice reduction targets. So that was completely left blank, and 100% of their calculation for CAT came from the non-duplicated CAT. You have a page for each school. And again, remember that the calculations are different at the high school level, of course, because they have several more areas. Elementary and middle this year were actually the same since college and career readiness was removed at the middle school level, and that weight redistributed equally among achievement, gap, and growth. Toward the back of the packet, you have lots of pretty rainbow-colored charts. You have one that is titled Component Scores by School. And this simply breaks down all of the things that you just saw on each individual page into one chart for you, so that you can look across and see overall scores, runners, program review, achievement, gap, growth. Again, readiness and graduation applies only at the high school level, gap, novice reduction, and student growth and categorical growth by school. At the bottom of the page, this is specifically in the area of achievement. And NAPD means novice apprentice proficient distinguished. You see that particular score, and then realize that the points, when those are converted, based on the percentages that they would be at the different levels. So you have to take that into consideration as well, if you see things that look a little strange there. On the next section, all of the CAT information is on the following page, the non-duplicated CAT information, which again applies to all the five content areas, and is the data for any student who is any one CAT category. Their scores are in that section. Novice reduction, those scores are at the bottom of the page. And again, that's only in the content areas of reading and math, and only for the schools that had novice reduction targets. And then the last page that you have is the growth page. Again, the growth scores by school, and growth again is only in the two content areas of reading and math. At the elementary and middle school levels, you have the student growth percentile, as well as categorical growth. The high school is based solely on the student growth percentile, which for this last year was from the plan to the ACT. I know there is a lot of information there, many, many numbers, many educational terms, assessment and accountability terms. Please let me know if you have any questions or any clarification about anything.
I like the format. I think you've done a really good job of putting it in a readable format for us. It is a lot of information, but just about anything you'd want to know is easily found in the format that you used. Like the individual scores, I can tell something from that best as opposed to compared to the other. I like that format the best.
Yes, and also a lot of the things that we'd seen before and read, and the things that were changed here.
That's probably just the way we're used to seeing it, I think, is pretty smart of that. Jennifer, did you have any questions, comments? And Mr. Brad?
I just have one. So last year, they issued a ranking in state, and I understand they didn't actually issue the rankings this year, but we can find that information now? Is that right? Like if we just look at our score and look at all the other schools?
You can basically take spreadsheets, and you can sort and determine, like out of however many districts or however many schools where you fall. It is a little bit different in the sense that previously, like a distinguished was at the 90th percentile or higher, and that number is still the same, but that isn't necessarily correspond to that exact percentile anymore, because they kept the CAT score the same. But yes, sir, that can be done.
I just didn't know, like last year we're 19th, right? I didn't know if we had a feel for where we overissued.
I can find that information out for you, and we bet you can, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, the school's been a little bit, I remember.
Ms. Tracy?
I was just thrilled. I just thought it was outstanding, and I just can't say enough good about our schools and all of our staff that work in here, and making these things possible.
I think it's wonderful. I'm still concerned, we have one in school that historically has always been needs improvement, and we can't seem to get past that. So I don't know what our suggestions are. And one of the East Heights concerns me, because at one time, that was a premium in school. And so down there to the point of needs improvement, it's kind of, I don't know, I guess I'm searching for answers as to how do we fix that. And you are too, I know you are. And so we'll be waiting to hear what the suggestions are for that.
They were just able last week to share data with staff. And so really, the principal and if they had an assistant or a curriculum specialist were aware of some of the scores prior to that. So they started that down to dirty work, and looking as closely as they can, getting down student to student, and finding out who scored novice, apprentice, proficient, and then looking at what they have this year. So definitely council to council, you'll hear out reports, and as they start to work through, and they've already started to look at their RTI, if their needs to be changing, have they included the kids that need to be in there? They've been working with their MAP data. And I can assure you, both schools are not pleased with their outcome also, but even though their overall label is needs improvement, they still have some great successes in there that you can see when you start to look at the data of things that still were working very well, especially in the academic areas. And the novice reduction is the area that in the calculation, they just, they gave points for it. And so they will look very closely at that. But we're also looking at their content areas, has their reading state stable, has their math state stable? And just, so yes, there'll be more to come, there definitely will be.
Do you all know yet if there will be, and if so, what kind of state assistance will be given, or those schools that are needs improvement or focus school?
From my understanding, this year there have been no, across the entire state, no new schools identified as focus schools or priority schools. Our high school remains a focus school simply because it takes two years of data, and so this is will be their second year. Obviously, we know they're making great strides in addressing all areas of need for them. At this point, my understanding, I don't believe assistance is given only at the priority school level, from what I've seen, as far as people.
Assistant, but not at that lower 5 or 10 percent of the priorities.
Needs improvement, but not a priority or focus school.
Any other questions, anything else you need to share with Ms. Kim? We look forward to council and councils.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
It's like kind of off the wall, but I just wanted to say, I was really proud of the results at Ben Gate School, as a father of a Ben Gate first grader. And they are just, whenever we were putting our daughter in elementary school, we had actually considered trying to get her to go out of district, based on where I work, because East Heights was performing so well, and Ben Gate scores were so far down, and they've come such a long way, and I just kind of wanted to say I'm really proud of them.
Yes, sir, schools have played great starts.
I thought the same thing about Carroll, because Carroll has had a lot of outside things that have not been going their way in the past year. And even with that all taken into effect, they still had great scores, and the stack load came together. So I was really pleased with them. They come together even when they don't have anything going in their direction. I think that's good. Okay, salary adjustments. This was brought up by Dr. Seug, started one conversation. Morgana and I had some subsequent conversations, so it's a couple of different areas. But Dr. Seug, if you'd want to start with what you were talking about, and then move on to some of the other things.
Well, in light of the fact that we just recently lost two staff members at the district office, well, one at the high school, but basically serves the district as athletic director, we've lost that person, and then also recently lost our PR person. I thought it would be a good idea for us to take a look at comparisons to other districts, first of all, to see, and not just neighboring districts, but districts of our size and our scope. For instance, in the athletic world, the scope that we cover is a lot greater than some of the surrounding districts. So I'd just like to see some comparisons there. And also, you know, what we're doing to recruit these positions that are kind of singletons, they're not classroom-level positions, they're not, they're quasi-administrative positions, but they require a special set of skills. And it worries me that we've had such turnover. And so I'm just wondering if possibly the salary increment for what we ask those people to do is part of the reason that we're losing them to the business world. And I know we can't compete dollar-for-dollar with the business world. But we do have physicians in our district, for instance, CTE, where we recognize that they have specialized skill. And so I'd like to just start the conversation and do a little bit of looking into that to see how we stand compared to other districts. And also, just in any other way, how can we recruit the best, hire the best, and keep the best when we get them in those types of positions? And those are just two I'm using as an example, but I think we have lots of physicians across the district, especially those that are on call 24/7. The A.D. position, I've watched that person works from 7:00 in the morning until pretty much 5:00, 6:00, 7:00 at night, day shift, and then they start their second shift to go to, depending on the season, ballgames, and you know, lots of nights not home until 11:00 at night. That's a pretty long day. And I know everybody has after-school work, but it's a different type of work. And the same for PR. That person, if there's an emergency or something, that person's on call 24/7. I also think when you look at our facilities, folks, it's the same way. If there's a leak that happens, and in the middle of the night, in dead of winter, I've witnessed it, our facilities people come in, and we would have lost several classrooms' worth of instructional materials, computers, and different things if they had not been so Johnny on the spot. And I know how many calls you get from Sonatrop, so I know they're not sleeping a full eight hours at night. So I just think that's something we need to start looking at, and have some real facts and data, so that we can reward those that are here doing a great job and giving above and beyond Call of Duty.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Morgana, do you want to go over some of the positions you and I talked about as well?
Okay, sure. I wasn't exactly sure what the comments were going to be about the A.D. Can I go back to that a little bit and refresh everybody's memory of how we got to those lineups? Because it's exactly sadly what you said. It falls into that quasi-administrative area. And when we put that salary schedule together back in the summer, we contacted, and there might be other people, so if there's other districts, let me know so I can get a whole spreadsheet together for you. We contacted Christian County, Davis County, Hardin, Hopkins, McCracken. We did do Union and Webster, which are smaller districts than ours, just to see what do they pay athletic directors in Webster area? Most of them, most of the A.D. actually are certified positions, so they work all during the day in the school, either as a teacher or as an assistant principal. And then on top of that, they have like anywhere from a 79, well, 5,500 Webster, up to a $10,000 in Hardin County stipend above and beyond. The difference here with our athletic director is they don't have any teaching responsibility during the day. We don't give them any administrative duties. And so if we were going to keep it where their sole job is athletic director, even though it's a long day, they're not tied to anything else, where does that fall into the middle? If we're going to use them and consider that an administrative position, then that's, we don't have any problem with that, but we hadn't in the past, and so we didn't, it wasn't presented to the board in that case, I guess you would say. We also wanted to make sure when we were looking at the salary schedule for athletic director, that because we were requiring a certified administrative principal position, which would be bachelor's plus master's plus rank one, more or less, that that salary wouldn't exceed what any of our principals were making as well. So we tried to get that balance in between. And that's how we landed with the athletic director salary across there. I definitely don't mind to put, I don't know if you all still have those notes from the, or if you want me to put it in a spreadsheet, information from the other school districts. And it differs from the amount of days that they ask them to work as well.
Why don't we wait and see what other positions we want to have comparisons in, maybe you can make a spreadsheet that's got several.
Are there other counties you want us to include?
I would probably include McCracken in that, they're in our region, they're comparable in size.
We do have McCracken. They require an administrative degree, and they use them as an administrator. So it's like a comparison. They have Shelby County in size.
Two high schools.
I believe they may have two athletic directors.
Hardin County has per school also.
Is Calaway County close to ours in size, or are they, I know they're stronger than McCracken.
Not really in size.
In the same size?
Western Kentucky's pretty much Christian, Hopkins, McCracken, are the foundations.
Okay, so A.D., and possibly if we can double-check the PR person's schedule across the path here. I mean, and this is not for changes we're making right now, this is changes for the future, is the way I see that.
Public relations is, we did a little bit of the same research, I didn't bring that with me tonight. But it could range anywhere from, and I talked a lot to Greg with Warren County and Bowling Green Independent, even though Bowling Green Independent is smaller in student population than to compete with Warren County, obviously, and they pay up to pretty much the same as what our athletic director's schedule would be. And ours is considerably less than that. It is. Considering our close proximity to Evansville, I know the districts are different. I understand how, that's all, it will be different, it may not be apples to apples, but at least you might get an idea of what they're paying their people, since that is our competition from a talent pool perspective.
I do, whenever we research with EBSC, they have a collective bargaining agreement, so that will need to be taken into consideration for our, you know, compares.
Is Warwick collective bargaining as well?
If anyone in any of them.
All of them, yeah. Okay. All right, do you all prefer that we look at it as an administrative certified position? Because that pay will, it could be very different. If we say that we want to look at athletic director, but we want to use an administrative pay, then you have to have certain certifications. So what is your pleasure here?
Would that person would also take on a teaching or assistant principal job duties at the high school?
That's what my question is.
I would say yes. I mean, I couldn't imagine saying that we're going to have another assistant principal at the high school with administrative degree, and then, and that's what a couple of the school districts do, that during the day, their job is assistant principal.
That's what my question was about, when we were talking about what they do during the day. At our high school at least, traditionally, the physician and the person in it, because of the skills she had, acted as an administrator for just about everything except academics, and even involved in academics to the point of counseling students, counseling, of course, athletes. But when new students would come in, sometimes she was the one that would help enroll them if the registrar was at lunch or had a sick day. So she did lots and lots of things that I considered administrative duties, so.
And I think when we hired Keith Morgan on, we didn't expect any of that.
So it's, well, I guess my point is, I think it depends on the person that you find that's the best fit for the job. I would hate to box ourselves in on either a salary or the duties. We know pretty much probably what we want, but then you have to look at those that actually apply, see who comes the closest to that fit. There may be some that this salary is perfect for, but there may be others that apply that, you know, would love the job, but this would not be an appropriate salary for them. And I'm talking about down the road. I just don't want us to continue having the turnover. Having Vivian Tomlin in that position was an anomaly. She was a hometown girl. She wasn't going to leave until she retired. But should we hire people that don't belong to the Henderson community and family? Sometimes they come, and they spend a few years, and then they're ready to move on. We don't want that. We want people to come and be a part of our district and feel loyal, and I just want us to do everything we can to keep people that are really good in the job and that are doing a great job. It just seems like we've lost one and then another, and I just want to prevent it anymore.
I agree with what you're saying. Part of me says, though, we need to set a set of standards and say, this is what's going to be required to do this position. If you were going to apply to a position where Jennifer works, the set of standards would be here, no matter where the you came from, Colorado, California, or Spotsville, the set of standards would be the same. So we need to set, whatever standards are set high, and then that's, the people that apply for that job, and if they've got any extras, if they're from Henderson, that's a plus. But I don't want to downgrade it to something that this person's a perfect fit, but there's somebody else that's more qualified based on what our requirements are. Does that make sense?
What I'm speaking about is the administrative certification. That's really the only piece I'm talking about. You may have someone that, you know, has been a professional athlete, or has had multiple jobs in that profession, and the same with PR, maybe has worked diligently at radio, TV, has, you know, extended resume, but they don't have an administrative position, so.
And they don't have to have that right now for what we have. You do not have to have an administrative degree.
And that's what I said, I don't want to box us into having to have somebody that has rank one to do those jobs.
But I think whatever people we interview, everybody needs to be interviewed the same, is what I, the point I'm making.
I think that as long as it's the understanding that this is the job description of the athletic director, and we re-broke that before we hired this summer to make sure it was cleaner, because we knew Vivian was overlapping, just from her natural ability and what she did for us, so. Yeah, I don't mind to put that information into a spreadsheet, check with Shelby County, and I'll look at public relations also. Sure.
Were there other, were there other areas within the district that you think are mainly slightly out of sight that we need to look at before next year? I don't see that these are salary changes we can make right now. We've already approved our salary schedule, we've already approved our budget. My personal thing would be any changes that we make, put them into next year before next year's coming, because that could be part of our next year's budget. I'm not into changing our budget to do, we've done that in years past, and I don't want to go back and start doing that again. But is there any other areas that you think may need to adjust before next year comes?
There's one we need to have conversation about. I'm not really prepared to have lots of conversation tonight. But we had a couple, it's been several years ago, our transportation pay for our bus drivers. We have different pay for bus drivers that drive preschool routes versus all the other drivers. And I think that's somewhere between seven and 10 drivers. It's a significant amount. About a quarter of 50 cents, it's $2 difference. But less, for preschool. And I understand that there's, you know, a smaller number of students. We've tried to do some research back, we haven't completely finished our research, so I kind of hesitate to throw it out there. But part of the research is our, it just doesn't, it makes a lot of sense what we're being told, so we want to do some, but I think it's an equity, it's an equity thing. I think we need to look at that.
Yes, I agree with that.
Can I just, the counties that had two high schools, do they have two athletic directors or just one?
Like for example, Hardin County, is what my dogs say. It's an administrative position that they have, so they work as administrators. And then each, each person gets $10,085 per school.
And we just had one, is that right?
Right. Well, we have one and an assistant.
Okay, well, for comparison's sake, in addition to, I wouldn't say rather, but in addition to focusing on school systems that have a similar number of kids, it might be fair to focus on high schools that are of a similar size, since we're in a unique position here and have so many.
Kids.
You know, I mean, just, if we could find an area that is of similar size to Henderson, with a big high school to compare to.
Yes.
Yeah, I would be interested in knowing those numbers as well.
I'm thinking Marshall County has basic, they have an athletic director, they have a medical secretary in the university system.
Yeah, I mean, I would be very interested in knowing those numbers, because I think the responsibilities with having one big high school versus having one that's a part of a two-high school system that's quite a bit smaller, might be smart for somebody.
I think speaking of anomalies, though, I think Henderson County is part of the home of the two of the size county that we are, that we have born, simple. I think speaking of anomalies, I think Henderson County is part of the home of two of the size county that we are, that we have one single high school. You either have bigger, you have bigger communities, but they have several high schools. Like you may go to some of the counties that, that Dr. Seug was talking about. There's several high schools. Ours is one single high school, even though it's divided into four units.
McCracken has an administrator with administrative pay. And then there's an assistant, a 210 day assistant of $46,000.
You have a question to break? Okay, so there's a couple of things that before we hopefully do our salary schedule for next year, Ms. Morgana, that we can go back and review and have some further discussions about. Trying to get the inequities and get the details lined up.
I hate to have one more to muddy the water, but I just, I really feel like since we're doing this, I would like for us to look at. I know we've done it for certified, but I don't know the answer to this. Have we done that for classified? Our classified folks work so hard and I don't know if they're equitable to districts that are like size either. And we are competing again with Evansville for a lot of, a variety of jobs with those people. Um, if you live in Madisonville, you pretty much, you're working in Madisonville. You don't drive, you know, some people do. But the people in Henderson have such a variety of places from which to choose. I'd like to see what our classified pay, how that stacks up to, again, not next month, but in the next several weeks or months. Could we have some information on that?
Done in individual departments like last year, particularly in technology, but across the board, all of our, all of our different. Pay, we can have done that for each time.
And it could become kind of general because all school districts do not call their people the same way that we do. When we were researching for administrative pay, looking at how much total, we have this many people in central office and McCracken only has this many. But we're paying less than what McCracken is as a whole. We had to go through and find, they don't have a director of maintenance like we do. They call them a maintenance specialist coordinator. It's, it's just difficult. You really have to dig deep to try to match them, uh, one for one. Um, but that, that is another area that, um, we will need to work on, I feel like, um, going forward.
I agree. Technology, we touched, we touched on, we touched on that last year. That's becoming a real piece of our pie. And, and I've been the one that's been shoving this elephant up the hill. So it's, it's going to be a piece, a bigger piece of our pie the whole time. Some people that help manage our technology is going to become one of those 24/7 jobs that Dr. Seug talked about. Because our kids are going to be taking these pieces home. Our teachers are going to be working on stuff. So that's going to be.
We also need to look at classified leadership positions. Classified positions are very much on the pay grade. But the directors, um, that are in a classified position, not a certified position, they're not on here. And they, they are kind of all over the board. And we just kind of, you know, continued on, but there needs to be some equity there.
So hopefully we've gotten through, um, all of, Dr. Seug's pushed to get our policies and the procedures correct. That's been the push for this year. If we've gotten that taken care of, maybe next year we can work on salaries. Sure. Does that appear to anybody else? Okay, cool. All right. Um, Periscope alternatives? Dr. Seug, yeah, you and I had talked about Periscope and how that, you know, the detail was not as clear. Maybe you had asked us to look into some other suggestions. You want to talk about that?
Well, I just had several people, it was especially after the meeting where we discussed taxes. And they were very interested in listening in and, and getting that information as they should be. And I'm really glad they were. And I'm, I'm really excited that we've gone to Periscope because we didn't have any kind of, uh, transmittance before of our meetings. But I think it might be time to look at what the next step would be. I know when I was home with knee surgery, I had to listen to it with it up to my ear and then try to watch. And it, it, it's not the optimum experience. So I was just curious if we could, uh, maybe look into the station that our, um, city government uses and see if we can have access to that. Or also the station that we share with HCC. I know we do it sort of on a month to month basis, but for the time of the meeting, maybe that's something that, um, HCC would be willing to, to share with us. And so I just think there's some avenues there. We need to search for that would be free or very limited cost, but can have a better experience for the people trying to listen in.
So you want us to have any comments, questions and questions about that?
I absolutely agree. Um, I've heard from people who are having the difficulty with the Periscope too. I know WSOM uses some kind of software, even on their, through their website, that you can watch, um, things such as the Kindle candidate debate or, so if, if one of those other two options, I love the idea of the cable channel or whatever access channel it is. Um, there are so many people though in the county that don't have cable. So I just think we need to think about that option to how can we get them tuned in to what's going on.
I was just going to say if, um, if going forward, uh, we've got a young lady from South Kentucky, Brittany Ross, that covers a lot of the school meetings. Uh, she livestreamed, uh, debate earlier on this year on Facebook and several thousand people watched it. And it was just a very comfortable way, very clear. The audio was clear. You know, everything was really nice to watch it right there on Facebook. There are probably 18,000 people in the county of Henderson that have Facebook accounts that are over the age of 18. And so it might be something we might consider.
Ms. Morgana, there's been several suggestions. Could you ask Mr. Ryan Bailey?
Sure.
To look into what our options are, what our costs would be and how, how do you think they might be service added to that and to us? Can you do that for us?
Glad to.
Okay, thank you. That'd be good. Cool. All right. Um, seeing nothing else, it looks like we're now to number six, which means everyone else gets excused. I need a motion to go into executive session pursuant to KRS 61.8101F for discussions right here, which might lead to discipline with students. I hear that motion please. Thank you, Dr. Seug. I'll second that. All in favor, say aye. Dis opposed? Motion, KRS, move to executive session. Thank you all.